I call to order the April 2019 meeting of the Morrisville Planning and Zoning Board. And I'll have Rob to give us an invitation.
Sure. Our Father in Heaven, we thank thee for this beautiful spring weather, for town which we live in, for all those who serve, and especially those who put their lives on the line for us every day. And we thank before the opportunity to serve in this capacity on the Planning and Zoning Board and ask for the guidance that we can make good decisions and help to ensure that the plan for the future of this town encompasses the needs of our citizens and that we can do so proficiently. We say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you, Rob. Before I move to the -- I think Sanjay, you will be the voting member this evening. Catherine, I think, was our voting member last month, so this month it's Sanjay. Changes to the agenda from your side?
No, sir.
Okay with the agenda, I'll move on to item four. Any changes or additions to the March 14 meeting? No. In a motion to approve the minutes?
What the motion?
Second.
Second.
What in favor say aye?
Aye.
No presentations, there's an opportunity for public address, but seeing nobody here, I think.
On the agenda are some additional amendments to the UDO related to the burial of underground utilities. Just for background, I think most of you probably recall that in September of last year, we brought forward some text amendments related to this issue, and we actually had two different amendments approved by Town Council at that time. The issue really was a result of a UDO requirement that indicated that existing overhead utilities need to be buried, and that was coming into conflict with the Duke Energy policy regarding burial, and we had developers caught in the middle and needed to come up with some way to address that. So what we ultimately ended up doing was adopting two ordinances, Ordinance A and Ordinance B. Ordinance A was essentially intended to buy us some time while we worked on kind of a longer term solution to the issue. What Ordinance A did was it expanded our authority at the staff level to grant waivers in condition where our code requirement was coming into conflict with a utility company's policy. And then we also, at the same time, expanded some of the exemptions in the code for things like transmission lines, wireless telecommunication facilities, and single-family homes. Ordinance B is set to take effect on May 1, and this was really kind of the longer-term approach that we were working towards. Ordinance B did a couple of different things. It did grandfather existing lines, and then it kind of made a distinction between whether or not burial needed to take place, depending on whether or not those lines were going to be moved. It also did a couple other things. There was a PIL that was part of that ordinance, a payment in lieu of undergrounding, that could be implemented in certain situations, and there was a requirement in that ordinance that regardless of whether or not the utilities could be immediately undergrounded, that an easement be provided. And as indicated, that ordinance is set to take effect on May 1. It had that later effective date, so we could work on a number of things in the meantime, including an overhead utility policy, a master plan, and there were some things that we needed to do to be able to implement the PIL portion of that. So just as an update, we have had several meetings with Duke Energy, and they've developed a master plan for probably about 75% of the town, where they've gone through and actually looked at the equipment on all the different poles to see, you know, what they think would be best to bury together at one time and still maintain the integrity of the system. So the lengths of those lines, depending on the location and the facilities, range from about 780 lineal feet to over 2,700 lineal feet, and the average length is about 1,800. So when we start to look at that, most of our developments fall definitely short of that. You're probably looking in the 500 lineal foot range for most of our developments. So that initiated some further discussions with council about, do we want to take PIL? Do we not want to take PIL? If we take it, are we actually going to use it? What are the financial implications to the town if we need to make up the difference? And I think some of those discussions are still ongoing. So really, at this time, we do not have what we need to have in place in order to implement a PIL. So we have an ordinance scheduled to take effect on May 1, and what is before you and what we are proposing is essentially to modify that, to kind of pull back the PIL, a portion of that amendment, but to keep in it the requirement that the easement be provided, regardless of whether or not the undergrounding is happening immediately. So you do have a text amendment before you tonight that is a modification of the original that still includes everything that was in Ordinance A, but also that includes the easement provision. And two action items for you, one is a resolution on the consistency statement, and another being an ordinance making a recommendation on the text amendment itself. Since this is scheduled to take effect, or Ordinance B is right now scheduled to take effect on May 1, we do kind of have this fast-tracked and scheduled for the Town Council meeting on April 23, because we really just can't let an ordinance go into effect right now that has a PIL in it without other things in place that do need to be in place to do that. So are there any questions?
Go back to the slide that showed the Plan B.
Which slide is that?
I think that's the Plan B, right? The option B, long term. That's what we are amending, right? Yeah, that's one.
Yes. This is Ordinance B. Once again, effective date is coming up. The only piece of that ordinance that we are looking to actually implement on May 1 is the easement requirement. Everything else is being rolled back for the time being, pending additional direction from council as to whether or not it's something they want us to continue to work on.
What happens, let's say we go and not do PIL, right? What happens between that time and the time council decides on whether to go with PIL at some point? If there are approvals done between those two periods, are those, can we conditionally approve them, or if staff approves them, what happens to those buildings, or those developments that can't comply yet? Do they get a free pass on them?
They would be subject to the ordinance that was in place at the time they submitted their development application. So even if a regulation changes, they go by the ordinance that was in place when they applied and moved forward. And we do still have the additional waiver authority that we have built in, where we can now grant waivers if our requirement is coming into conflict with Duke Energy's policy.
I guess kind of expand on that same thing, that part of the reason why they want to make the change is because they're worried the town could be on the hook for, you know, additional money. Let's say somebody develops it, and I'm assuming we take the payment in lieu, and there's the rest of the line, right? And that's what you're worried about, was having taken the money.
I think there are financial implications that may be, you know, more significant than maybe originally thought, until we really started sitting down and developing a plan. And there are other legal aspects to that as well, in terms of things that we would need to do in order to be able to implement PIL, and we're just not there.
But if we just keep kicking the can down the road, we may as well just never even do it. I mean, because now, who knows? We may not have anyone that submits. But if they do, they don't have to underground their lines, and they don't have to give us money to underground the lines. And that just compounded the problem that we are trying to not have. So we're saying, this is the problem we're trying to avoid, but we're going to actually make that problem worse by kicking the can down the road. That's my fear. This goes on and on and on, add to item, and we never do anything, and oh, well, we're done with development in Morrisville, at least new development, and so we don't even ever do anything. And it just...
Yeah, and...
Without a time limit on this thing, it's like, at least when there's a time limit, it kind of, you know, it's a time limit, but if we just let this keep going on and on, we'll never do anything.
Right. And the reason I ask, if PIL was the issue...
If I can jump in?
Oh, sorry.
Give Rob a chance. Any comments on this, Rob?
I have some of the same concerns about not collecting, you know, payment in lieu to do something that we know we, well, at least we, I think we as a committee feel like we want to have, which is power lines gone and buried. I guess I don't really understand the fullness of the legal ramifications that prevent us from doing a PIL now, as we still kind of develop out the policy, understanding that we would still want to use it, or at least assuming that we would still want to use it down the road, to do some of these things, even if it's not every single one, at least some of them in town. And then the other piece that, I guess, comes up to my mind is, are there specific development requests and parcels that have come to us and said, this payment in lieu makes doing business with the town unsustainable, and this is a result of some of that feedback at the moment? Or what's, I mean, so the legal side and the developer side is, I guess, what I want to understand a little better.
We did have some discussions with council about this at retreat, you know, as we were developing the master plan and talking through everything that we, you know, the progress we made and what we needed to get into place to be able to do that. And part of that was potentially submitting legislation, which we had been advised by our town attorney would be very smart to do. We do not have that in place.
Submitting legislation to the state legislature?
Yes.
Legislature?
So we would need to submit legislation to make this possible? Is that what we're saying?
That...
Believe we would need to? To shore up the legality of doing it?
We're working within some gray area.
Okay. Okay. Makes sense. Yeah, so just a... On the developer side, was there anything on that, in terms of developer feedback, that's feeding into some of this as well, in terms of the amount or the price, or even coming at us and saying, no, you can't do this because it makes our current project, our future project unsustainable? And, I mean, is that also coming to us as well?
Yeah. We have, no one's contacted us, I don't know to directly talk about this, but in other conversations, you know, we have heard that, you know, you want PIL for utilities, you also want affordable housing, and there being some tension between some of the different things that the council is showing interest in.
I mean, because of all the affordable housing that was built before we had this requirement?
Let's give Tim a chance.
Sure. Just had a question around the mechanics of the payment in lieu. It says that if a project is planned in the next three years, what's the start date? Is that planned or to be completed within three years? So how far can that stretch out? And would the payment in lieu for a project be such that it would cover that cost regardless of when it is?
What we were initially thinking was, most of these are state roads, most of these are NC DOT projects, you go through a STIP process. We usually know at that three-year point if we have a project or not, and if we knew we had that on the books. That's why we picked the three years.
So with the clarification of planned for it to start in three years, or completed in three years?
Start within three years.
So the, and the cost payment would be aligned to paid for in full at the end date, not at the start date?
If we were going the PIL route, the initial thought was, you know, it might be smart in some cases to coordinate those projects and take the money to put it towards a larger project that would be done at one time, as opposed to piecemealing it. Because, and there are cost efficiencies as well of doing these things when you're widening roads and you already have things torn up.
Second question, there are four items here, we're talking about going forward. The PIL being the sticking point, what about the other two? Were they just on those?
For the time being, yes.
PIL as the issue?
I think as we've had additional discussions with council, we're looking for direction from them at this point as to where they really want to go with this overall.
Catherine, any questions?
I'm sure that I'm reading this wrong. It was something about it didn't apply to internal...
So the Ordinance A exemptions?
Exemptions, existing... Sorry. Anyway, so, individual, single-family, all right, exemptions for individual, single-family homes not associated with a new type 1 or type 2. So is that if somebody goes and buys a piece of land?
Yes. I mean, as the requirement was previous in the code, it applied to all new development. So hypothetically, if someone bought a lot and just wanted to build one house, or tear something down and build one house, this requirement would have applied. So that was an exemption that we built in last September.
Okay. And has Duke, on this back, passed Duke? Remember when they were here in the fall?
And we're continuing to meet with them. I think it's been helpful to us to have that master plan kind of laid out, to see, you know, what can be done together. And so we've met with them several times, and we are, you know, planning on continuing to finish that exercise, because there are benefits when someone comes in to meet with us to know upfront, are we doing this, are we not doing this, without all the back and forth and conversations and negotiations that are happening each and every time right now.
Well, I thought we were making progress on this. This kind of was triggered by that development on Church Street, where I thought we'd come to some agreement. I thought Duke was kicking and screaming, but we got them to agree. I thought you had a wonderful plan that, you know, we would set PIL to build up a fund so that we could continue with this project. And now I find it's come to a screaming halt, and it appears to be partly as a direction of council? Council getting cold feet, or...
I think partly understanding some sort, some of the finances, needing to talk through that more. The one on Church Street, we did partner on and put some money into, but when you're looking at potentially, it was discussed as a potential rezoning condition with the aviation landing planned unit development. And with the work that we had done with Duke Energy, we knew that we were looking at about a 2,000 lineal foot segment along that stretch that, you know, they wanted to do at once. And we had 500, 600 feet with the aviation landing development, and not a lot of other property in that area that was prone to redevelopment. So council was kind of faced with the question of, are we really going to pick up the rest? Because that's what would need to be done in order to allow that to happen, and I think that spurred some additional discussion as well.
When you say that land wasn't prone to being redeveloped, I'm sure there are still some instances on Church Street where it looks at the moment, there isn't going to be any development, but in some areas certainly would be. So as Lee points out, you know, we're just kicking this down the road, it'll never happen, so...
With the PIL, we are in a position where, without the other stuff in place, it really is not advisable to allow that to take effect.
Can we go back to the old version, where they just can't develop? Until we have the PIL stuff ready? Is that also not council's desire?
Well, you know, to me, it really doesn't matter what council's desire is or not, right? We are not here to decide, not please them per se, we are here to decide what our recommendations are, right? So I would say, we as advisors have to take a, if you will, council agnostic position and look at the overall towns thing, and they get voted, but you don't...
The background's still relevant, though. If we've had that conversation already, at least, it advises us as to how they feel about it, so...
It's also our job to make recommendations, so...
Let me ask a different question about this. So we take PILs, even though I'm not a big fan of it, we do take PILs for road connections, we take PILs, I mean, for quite a variety of situations.
Yes.
So how don't we, why don't we have similar issues with those PILs, the legal issues that we could potentially have with these?
There is express general statute authority for each of those.
In our in-town legislature, legislative?
By the state.
State laws, okay, yeah.
Is this the only area where we don't have a state legislation that allows us to take PIL? Is that what I'm hearing?
Not the only. I mean, we can't do things like collect school impact fees and other things.
I get that, but that's, I'm talking about in terms of the ones that we currently do, right? Or at least we want to do.
I, you know, I'm trying to think of what other possibilities may be out there. Off the top of my head, I don't really know, but this is one where, the ones that we do collect, there is that express authority to collect.
The PIL for parks, for example, that's over under GS?
It is.
How do other municipalities handle this in there?
Kerry's Bill and Wegman's over there, are they requiring it on that big development?
It is being buried. It's a long enough stretch, because it's a pretty significant development with a lot of frontage, that it was able to be buried. But, you know, we've talked to Kerry, we've talked to Holly Springs, we've talked to others who, you know, are finding themselves in similar situations where we are, where they have a code conflicting with utility company policies, and are having to find ways with waivers and other things to kind of work through it.
I guess, are they having them undergrounded, or they're waiving that and they're not doing?
The Wegmans is being buried.
No, no, I mean, the other, let's say, like Apex must have this, because if you go out to Richardson Road, and there's a million little developments here and there with small frontage, but they go way back, so...
Yeah.
Are they doing it or not doing?
I would say, the ones we've talked to, there are a fair amount of waivers being granted. You also have some situations, like in Holly Springs downtown, where there are some ways that, you know, municipality could put some money into something to help make it happen, but everyone's kind of grappling with it right now.
All gang up on Duke somehow?
Contingency of them raising our rates.
I'll do that anyway.
That's not happening either way.
If you go back to that ordinance B, I understand the issues with PIL. Why, why would we not do that, the second part? That if poles need to be relocated, they still have to do undergrounding? What's stopping us from doing that?
The current code just says regardless, they need to be undergrounded. If you wanted to recommend pulling that back and saying they only need to be undergrounded if they need relocated as part of the development, we could take a look at that. At the end of the day, my guess is we're going to have very few developments that meet the utility company's policy. It's going to be a large development like Park West Village, where we're really going to be meeting these lengths, and in the meantime, there'll be a number of waivers granted.
How far off are we on, what is the requirement for the minimum length that they will bury?
So their policy is that they won't consider it until you get to 1,000 lineal feet, so it doesn't mean if it's 1,000 lineal feet, it could go underground. It's, that's when they'll look at it. That's their policy. When they actually started mapping things out, we had a couple that were a little under 1,000 lineal feet, not many, but you could see the range started at 780. But it goes up pretty high, depending on the types of facilities on the line. We have a lot of these three-phase systems, and, you know, getting from X piece of equipment to Y piece of equipment that are kind of critical, you know, what that takes. So it varies, but you're looking at an average of about 1,800 lineal feet.
1,000 is when they consider it, when do they actually?
Well, they're going to look at, we come in with a development project, we're all now going to look at this map and see, okay, what is that specific segment? What's the length of that specific segment?
But they're not compelled to do it at any specific...
No. No.
What exactly, so I'm just looking at the legend on this map. So the legend doesn't exactly agree with what we're seeing here. There's like red or orange, and then there's green, and there's the little black sort of tick mark. So what are those? Is that just segments between pieces of equipment? And then what's the difference between the red and the green?
Yeah, and we have more of an interactive map, where we could get the length off of it, but that probably does require some explanation. So when you're looking at this, everything that's in blue is already buried, and the red is what is above ground. And then really, just kind of going through it with a highlighter in three colors, green, yellow, or red, in terms of, is this a segment that can be buried? The green is absolutely, it can be buried. The red is kind of a no-touch zone, and then the yellow is, yeah, it could probably go underground, but we're going to need to do a little bit more investigation on that one.
But these are based on lengths of these segments, not, there's no difference in the lines or whatever, and I guess the segments are these tick marks?
The tick marks are, between those tick marks is what they would bury together at one time.
So I see how now, this is more than just a certain length, this is them wanting to stay between certain pieces of equipment on their system that they prefer to do. So it's still, I mean, whole thing comes down to, it's like, you know, you almost feel powerless as a town, because the railroad can do what they want, the utility can do what they want, and they're like, we can't do anything what we want. I mean, you know, I understand they have a preference of certain things, but it's just kind of comical that almost every one of these things probably crosses multiple property lines, and so therefore, unless you had an entire section that had been recombined, I mean, you're almost sunk in even trying to do it.
And there are some smaller segments, but most of these are pretty long. Like I said, they've gone through about 75% of the town.
I hate to be the historian all the time, but I was part of the board when we pushed to get utilities underground. And you notice on your map that the utility is underground in front of McCrummon Corners, in front of that development. And it's quite noticeable as you come down Davis, you've got overhead utilities, then they go underground quite neatly, then you pop up into a bit of carry, and then up in the air again, and then, and so it seems like we're losing ground here. We had something in place that was working, and now we're just backtracking. Very disappointing.
Have we, have we, I mean, I know when, when the developer comes in, and let's say they have a 500-feet yardage, okay? Have we considered, instead of waiting to do the entire stretch at the same time, have we considered perhaps... at the same time, have we considered perhaps funding the remaining 500 so that the developer can do that activity for us at that same time? I mean, otherwise, I'm with everybody here that we are never going to get, if we are going to wait for everything to line up to do it, this is never going to happen.
They're talking about with the aviation one, right? I mean, that was the consideration, and the feasibility of it money-wise just wasn't there.
Yeah, but, I mean, what I'm trying to say is, could we not do this project by project? Maybe the aviation one, I understand that it's a long stretch. That's one place where we grant an exception and say, we will hold on to it until the next development comes in, and perhaps between them and them, we'll do it, right? But if I take a look at the chart here, majority is green. In other words, those projects can happen. So, is the question really about, can we fund the remaining stretch at the time the developer is coming in to develop a piece of property along that green?
There are a couple of different ways that we were looking at it. One, partner with projects one-on-one. You know, as a development came in, there's this much left, can we kick money in? We also talked about, you know, road betterment policy, and as we're doing road projects, what's our policy? You know, do we want to be putting money into burying these? Obviously, as you indicated before, planning and zoning board recommending body, you know, make the recommendation on this that you see fit. When we get to the council level, you know, there are dollars in play and, you know, priority discussions with, you know, other transportation projects, park projects. And you start getting into those financials of, what is a town, are you going to spend your money on? And then there's also, you know, right now, we cannot do the PIL.
I understand, but for our information's sake, let's say, what's the average lineage of property requests that come to us? Is it 500 feet? Is it 600 feet? Let's say 500 feet.
It's probably, yes, it's probably pretty close.
Could you tell us what is the typical cost associated with, what's the average costs or typical cost associated with that extra 500 or per lineal feet? How would it cost us to do per lineal feet extra?
It's about $400 a lineal foot, so you're looking at a couple hundred thousand dollars. Now, if you do it in association with a road project, it does start seeing cost efficiencies and the cost starts going down.
Right.
But you get into six figures very quickly.
An extra 600,000, basically, out of our pocket.
That average 1,837 is not based upon what that property extra is, right? This is average of all the things that are out there.
That's the average of the segments that have been identified as possible, right? So, if the average property is, development is, say, around 500, you're looking at over 1,000 feet that we would pick up a tab on, where the property owner would pick up the smaller portion of that.
But what if we, here is where I'm trying to do, is trying to figure out, how best can we do this, right? There will be outliers. In other words, that 2781 lineal feet is maybe around the aviation park one, right? That's a outlier. If we eliminate those outliers, what's the typical, what's the extra that I'm trying to, here is the reason, right?
So, we still have the right to do that, right? We can still not grant a waiver and say, we are choosing to fund the remaining portion as a town, and you, the developer, developing the property, have to pay for the part that's yours? And we can do that on a choice-by-choice basis, is that right?
We did that on one other project on Church Street.
Not that we would, but we could still do that, is what I'm asking, under the new version we're proposing here.
Possible, that you could, we did an MOU with another one, but I think that's, you know, another question of kind of, you know, consistency with how we treat these moving forward, which is why, you know, we were looking at creating a policy as well.
True, but, you know, we have to develop this town in an agile manner. It cannot be, it cannot be a 10-year project. So, that's why you, I mean, everybody's going to argue, well, we can't do this, we can't do that, but you have to start somewhere. I understand giving everybody fairness, but this is really kind of trying to get to that fairness and still meeting the community's need, right? So, we have to look at, how do we do these projects together?
Michelle, I think what you're asking us to do is to recommend an amendment to the amendment so that that then goes to council and it's eliminated.
And, you know, we at the staff level are looking for additional direction whenever that might come. So, I mean, part of this is your recommendation in terms of, you know, the importance you feel this has.
So, one of our options is to not support us. And as I look at the consistency statement, as it furthers the aesthetics and public safety interests of the town.
I will say that if it is a negative recommendation, just at the staff level, we'll still be advising council, hold off. We don't believe implementing PIL right now would be a good thing to do, but it would be maybe more of a deferment.
But I think you do have a good point. It's kind of funny that we're going to say that not undergrounding these lines aligns with all of these things, when it actually doesn't align with all of these things. I mean, it's a pretty awkward thing to have to vote yes on. Clearly, having above-ground lines is worse in this area where we have ice storms and hurricanes, so you can't really say that it provides a safe, I mean, I don't know, I just, it's a...
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think the recommendation...
Like, policy one F. How can that possibly be leaving, voting to leave lines above ground? How can that possibly align with policy one F?
Because we still have the requirement in place for burial with the waiver potential, and you're getting the easement up front. So, if we go through at a later date and bury these, the easement is established, the landscaping has already been set behind the easement, so you're not ripping up established landscaping at that time. So, you know, getting that easement established to help set the stage for something in the future goes above and beyond what we have in place today.
It doesn't, I don't agree with two, that it meets two A either, right? Promote development that fosters a sense of place for, by improving the character of the building, the built environment, including visual appealing building streets, escaping amenities and public space generally, but, you know.
I guess you're saying comparing, we're not really supposed to be comparing this against what would take effect on May 1st, we're comparing against what we have in place now? I mean, I, you know...
Is the amendment consistent, you know, with our long-range plans, and, you know, that is your decision to make?
Alternative that, on a project-by-project basis, say, oh, you have an extra 500 feet? That's part of the economics of the deal. Take that into consideration as to whether you want to invest in that. 500 for you and 400 for somebody else is part of the overall economics of building. Go develop, and that, in and of itself, is consistent because you're applying the same rule to any developer.
Exactly.
Because it's just based upon the land that you have. And, you know, just like you were at, a stream going through it or whatever, it's part of there.
Yeah, and the point is, if you take a look at overall project, you would end up, it would end up costing the town much less compared to if the town had to do it on its own, even after we do PIL.
I mean, not in favor of PIL, but I'm less in favor of not getting anything.
Yeah, exactly.
Nothing, so.
The way I see it, when we look at the map, the biggest opportunities that we would be missing in 10 years in this likely be on 54th.
That and Church, potentially.
Church Street.
Church Street, yep.
There are light there that allows us to catch up.
And a little bit of aviation, right? Those are really the only parts of this map that I think redeveloped or developed for the first time.
Also, things around Little Drive and those areas, too.
Breathing Room.
That under Morrisville, no?
Well, it's not on this plan.
Well, we did a couple, we did some annexations.
Yeah, but that's up on the other side of 147.
The Kids Creek area, right?
I don't think we have jurisdiction for RTP land.
No.
So, in the grand scheme of things, when I think about those streets and those areas, I can't think of many of them where we would financially have a feasible situation where we would say, yes, we want to, we want to cover the remaining and let you go ahead and not get a waiver and pay for your portion of that segment, because the segments are so big and the parcels are so small. And when you look at the majority of the town, there's only a small portion of the town that still would be action, right? I don't know, I mean, it's...
But are those segments big because there is no development in between and therefore the consumption is less? Because if there was development in between, they probably are going to add more equipment in between those segments.
But I think they're, if you look at this, if you go out there and look, I'm sure that you're going to find, there's like a switch or something, there's probably features of their system that they are, that makes it easier for them to stay in between.
Either in transition.
Because I know, I'm looking at this like down the street from me, on Marshall Carpenter, I think I know exactly where like that point is, because I think that is where they, it's one of those big switch things that has like the keys that goes down the bottom, you know, so that's what they're trying to stay in between. It doesn't necessarily have that much to do, I don't think, with how much development's in that one area, because that's more of a longer line that goes on down, it goes on down, whatever. So, I think that's why they're trying to do that, and it's probably, you know, may have something to do with it, but...
We'll say, going through this exercise with Duke and continuing to finish it has, you know, had a benefit because, as I said, staff, the developer, Duke, aren't having to have numerous conversations about each and every project as it comes in. We now have a map that we could look at, and we all know from the get-go, is this doable or is this not?
90% covered by developer, we're probably going to say yes, and if it's 50/50, we're up in the air, we're probably not going to pay for it, right? I mean...
After this gets to council, we're going to lose momentum. If we, if council adopts this short term, you know, we can't, we can't handle PIL, we need a GS, et cetera, et cetera. What's going to be driving it so that we do actually get the legislative approval?
I think we definitely need clear direction if that's something that they want to do and want to go forward and pursue or not. And then if they do decide to do that, there's numerous strategy that goes into play in order to propose something like that.
I don't know that the North Carolina Legislature is very town regulation-friendly.
Yeah. So, you're talking two years minimum, because honestly, I don't think you can even, maybe you can get it submitted this year, but next year's a short session. Can't submit it that year, so, I mean, it's probably going to be two years minimum.
But it may be even longer if it is, if it has to go through the legislative process.
So, do we, as a board, need to take some, maybe make some other recommendation, strong recommendation, council that we are, approach that we could perhaps take?
Yeah, I mean, that's really no choice.
Himmler and me says, keep collecting PIL and see what happens.
Yeah, exactly. In worst case, you had to give it back. I mean, right? We did the same thing down the road here 20 years later. I mean, so, if we keep records of it, we'll know how much to give back this time, and it won't be a huge problem.
And for the 20 years, we can collect interest and give them the pay.
Pay for Crabtree Crossing with it. All right, I mean, I got there.
But you're right, I mean, that's, can certainly be an option, right? We are anyway going in the gray area, so might as well fly under the radar.
Is it okay that we're not in love with any of these things?
Is it okay what?
Is it okay if we're not in love with any of these options? We don't need a motion to not recommend, do we?
Motion one way or the other.
I think you said we just defer, is that the, we either motion, we either make a motion to recommend or we just defer.
Staff's recommendation would be that we act on these amendments now, because there's a danger in allowing what is set to take effect May 1st to take effect May 1st. So, we would strongly encourage you, you know, to recommend approval of these amendments. If you would like to make a side recommendation of some sort to council, that is an option as well.
But don't we have an option to basically say that we don't agree with this and, instead of recommending to approve this, we could say, recommend to disapprove and let the council decide what they want to do, right? Ultimately, they're prerogative, too, right?
We can recommend to keep the current...
It's not a recommendation, that is your decision.
Question for clarification, effective May 1st, that's the date, but then there's the time to develop these things, so is the time to, what is that time? How long does it take to actually?
You could see we're, you know, a good part of the way through the master plan. There's the associated policy that would need to be discussed. It's really that other piece that we're talking about with the legislation that's absolutely critical.
Could there be a deadline and it reverts back if not done by that deadline?
Yeah, that's the option.
So, say, okay, you can, you know, go for this period of time, but not by next day or reverts back prior.
In other words, we recommend, instead of this ordinance going into effect in May, this ordinance goes into effect in, let's say, June. I'm just making it up. So, we are recommending, deferring the effective date of the ordinance down to, by two months, right? And that basically gives you two months to come up, and they all have to live with what is the current ordinance for next two months.
You could do that. We have missed the window for this year. So, if you're looking to potentially make a recommendation that we move forward with this, but then replace it with the original at a date that you would choose for your motion, just know that we're probably looking farther out.
So, when you say we have missed the window, window for what?
The legal aspects of it.
Right, but my point was, but...
He's saying, instead of, instead of having the current amendment go into effect May 1st, we recommend changing the current amendment just to have a later effective date to give council more time to talk about it and make their ultimate decision. But they'd still have to approve the delay in the original anyway, right?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
She's strongly implying that we can't do that because the council won't be able to then get the legislative approval to...
You could defer the effective date out further.
And they could approve that at their next meeting, technically.
They can approve to answer that, but it can't possibly happen because the deadline for submitting anything. So, the legislative solution is two years from now, minimum.
But that's a solution, right? That's not the solution.
It can't actually, no matter what the council does, she's saying is that basically we cannot possibly move... we cannot possibly move forward upon legal advice without having a general statute in our favor, and that can't possibly happen for two years.
But is that the only solution that, that the attorneys have recommended? Is that the only solution, or are there other solutions, other options?
If you wanna make a recommendation to push back, you know, the effective date of this, and I don't know that it would have to be two years, but, I mean, absolutely, it's in your right to make any recommendation that you so choose. But if it makes, you know, if pulling this back so much is causing you concern, and you'd rather, you know, say, May 1st or June 1st of, you know, 2020, that could be done.
So that would keep us in, into temporary state of the amendment?
Yes. The only thing we'd be losing in the meantime is the ability to get the easements in place.
We wouldn't be able to get easements, but we would still be collecting PIL?
No.
So we would get neither one? So that's the one, so we have a real...
We would get neither one, but we would have the ability to grant a waiver. That's already in place. Was not before.
We could grant waivers, but they were very difficult to grant based on the old criteria, the new criteria added.
Now it's easier to grant a waiver.
Conflict with the utility company's policy, which expanded our ability to do that.
But basically, if we were recommending, the council would agree, which is not gonna happen, but in that world, if we did that, if we denied this, then we would not be able to get an easement, and we would not be able to get payment in lieu, correct? So if we approve this, and the council approves it, which is likely to happen, we will not be able to get payment in lieu, but we will be able to get an easement.
You'll be able to get the easement...
But I'm saying if we deny...
Pretty much almost immediately, starting May 1st, we could start requiring that as development coming.
Based on our choices.
And then, you know, like I said, the, the PIL may or may not be revisited if you take that approach, I do not know.
But I'm saying, if we, the choice isn't, whenever the council votes, if we deny this and we can't get easements, right? Or payment in lieu, or we approve this and we can get an easement, but not payment in lieu, right?
Either way, we're not getting the money.
I mean, you could make, you could potentially make a motion recommending that, you know, this go into effect May 1 with the easement, but that you would like to see the remainder of it still coming, come into effect at a later date.
Right, that, essentially where, where I was heading is, if you go back to that ordinance two part, or the B part, that slide. Yep, so, I was, in fact, thinking the same thing, is the only one that you defer is that point, bullet number three? From going into effect on May 1.
But the first point doesn't help us. The second point is really a non-starter, because we're not gonna be able to do it.
Why?
Here, the third one is punted for two years, and we get the easement. I guess, see, before you mentioned the danger of doing nothing, what is the danger?
The PIL will take effect May 1st. If nothing is done, this ordinance will go into effect as originally adopted.
We can collect PIL.
Of which we do not have statutory authority to do, and that puts us in a very tenuous legal situation. That's why we are advised by our town attorney not to include the PIL, because we do not have statutory authority to collect it.
Maybe a crazy question, but this didn't come up before when this was being written?
It's one of the reasons that we had a May 1 effective date.
But the way it is worded, PIL would be an option, right? It implies that when they come into request waivers or whatever that may be, right? We would at that point in time decide whether they have to give PIL or not, right? Because the point being, the PIL could be zero, so we could still go into effect with this entire as written, and we may choose not to ask for PIL.
If it was written in the code, it would be a you bury it or you contribute the PIL.
Or the waiver option. You either, you either bury it...
Yeah, I got it.
Or you have a waiver that also includes the PIL. And if we can't collect the PIL, then you just have to bury it. Not developing.
So, again, could we not rewrite the third one? Take all four, but rewrite the third one to remove the PIL, but include some project-specific language that requires them to look at whatever is left for that project, would have to be evaluated.
And that would be individual case-by-case evaluation, where you're potentially, council's making a decision about whether to do an MOU each time. They could do that regardless.
Okay. But maybe that's the plan going forward, it puts a little pressure on folks to then maybe move it through.
If I may add, the challenge, and we'll use Meyer's point for example, so Duke does not have statutory authority to condemn for utility easements. So we had to go to an adjoining property owner and ask them nicely if they were willing to give it. It took months. And the challenge is if we end up with the neighboring property saying no, we've now designed an entire project with a much smaller easement, and it's redesigning projects. So the width of an easement for an overground utility is much larger than a width of an easement for undergrounding, and the ability to install landscaping is quite different. You know, Duke strictly prohibits any landscaping within their easement for overhead. They don't have major heartburn. If limbs kind of branch over top into the airspace of their easement, they're not going to cut them down. However, branches of a tree go into an overground utility easement into their airspace, they have a right to start trimming those trees. So if you look at the trees that have a unique trimming to them along Morrisville Carpenter Road, that's an example. So there are some challenges with the design, and then having to go back and redesign a project potentially after the fact. So everything would have to be designed under the assumption that everything is above ground, and then they would be lucky enough to then have a smaller easement, but there, again, their project's kind of already in place, and they've lost potentially a percentage of land to develop and/or preserve in other ways.
So, so we could change the EDO so that anywhere that there are overhead power lines, require a bigger buffer along that roadway? Or, as an alternative, payment in lieu for parks? Substitute for that buffer green space and reduce the size of that buffer back to the original.
We cannot collect PIL in that instance for parks, because the statute is very clear under the circumstances of which we can collect. However, you can make buffers larger when they are adjacent to power lines. You can do that. You can require power lines than an entire tree save area potentially. I mean, there's lots of different, we have the ability, not for our single-family detached residential or duplexes or manufactured homes, but we have other statutory authorities. So we have statutory authority to preserve trees. You know, admittedly, there's a bill going through right now that may modify our ability to preserve trees. But we do currently have that statutory authority where other jurisdictions do not. And then PIL is really based off units for parkland. That's how that was written. It's statewide authority for a single-family detached and townhome, and then we have special legislation for our multi-family development.
We did have some internal discussions about when we brought this forward. Did we also potentially want to bring forward some buffer amendments to kind of go along with it? And the thought was, we're working on a pretty tight timeline here to get this through PZB and council, to keep it as simple as possible for this, at this point, but we do have other amendments that are gonna be coming to you in the next two, three months. And, you know, if that is something that you want us to explore and bring back as part of the other, you know, batch of amendments that, you know, we are gonna be preparing for your consideration, you can let us know that.
I kind of prefer to go down that more creative path of trying to incentivize the developers to pay for it themselves anyway...
Exactly.
Versus taking the waiver. Because the waiver is the only, only place where this actually comes into, I guess, effect, if they need the waiver or want the waiver. But even then, I guess, legally, I guess we're not, we're not able to make them pay for a longer section, even if it's more financially attractive to them, they can only pay for the section that's in front of their property, is that, is that correct?
You can't require off-site improvements.
If that would actually have any kind of incentive effect on them, I guess legally, maybe it can't, right? Other than giving us bigger buffers.
I like the incentive, but I think, you know, it's gonna be easier and better over the long term if there is an easement, because that way the landscaping that the developer puts in will mature.
Yeah, I mean, no doubt easement is, is something we want, right? But at the same time, we are looking for, how do you still keep them, or at least the thought of burying these power lines in some shape or form?
Start lobbying the town council. And from a pragmatic standpoint, I mean, it really comes down to, we need to really approve this, the council needs to approve it, and then they move on and try to figure out a better way forward. I mean, can't see really any way, much as this is not a good thing to vote for.
Right.
As soon as the option is forward, it gives you the easement, I mean, I mean, that would make a difference.
You could write the motion that we recommend approval, but under duress. Maybe duress is too strong of a word, but you...
But you're still approving it or you're not approving it?
Under legislative duress?
Or you could just approve one and two and four, right? And thereby make development really hard, near impossible, for two years. Have to take that two-year period to figure this out, get, come back with payment in lieu, and you start developing again. And yeah, you face a two-year window where it's gonna be really hard to develop anything.
It's also a motivation for the developers to say, you know, I'm willing to make donations.
Well, but then it changes, you get a pause on what's been a pretty rapid development over the last ten years.
Which might be, which might be a good thing for us.
I think to your point, though, what it does is it forces developers along these segments to talk to each other and coordinate.
Yes, exactly. That might be something where you just, here's what we're gonna do, we're gonna grandfather the existing, if you wanna do something new, you gotta bury it. And that means you gotta figure it out, and if you're gonna do it, you're gonna do it.
But, but again, goes to kind of that same point, there's places where everything's been developed except for one parcel.
Or there's one parcel that might not be developed in between two. I mean, that, we don't really have a lot of contiguous land, that's a problem.
Right, and so, and so for those parcels, any development would ultimately be impossible for them, because they can't coordinate with another parcel.
Exactly, and so that, but that, it does, it...
I'd rather, I'd rather us speak to those things and put, put policies into effect that force undeveloped properties to work together and coordinate to make this possible. And in the situations where there is, you know, highly developed and undeveloped neighboring on one of these segments, where you are, or you're able to be a little more lax about it and just get the easement instead.
But that's, that's the, that's the part where the MOU can come in with the town, right? The, what we, we are always going to have exceptions of a situation where everything is built and one piece is not. Or, you know, one piece is being, trying to be built and everything else is still open, right? But if we, if we try to address those two outliers, then we are never going to come to any particular plan, right? To me, those two, those two cases need different ways of dealing with it on case-by-case basis, right? While the ones that are, that we should address is the eighty percent of the case where, you know, there are multiple parcels being developed that are potentially going to be developed.
If you're looking at potentially making a recommendation where you're saying, if the poles need to be relocated, you have to bury, and we're still in conflict with a Duke energy policy, and/or it's requiring them to do off-site improvements and work with other property owners, I don't know that that's a position that we want to be in, where it's basically you can't develop unless you could figure this out.
Unless you talk to each other and coordinate in a sensible fashion. I mean, I mean, I think there's people who do want us to be in that position, maybe not everybody, but I think there's...
Right, people want a lot of things, but there's the legality of what we can and can't do, I mean, town.
Yeah, and that's the, that's what we have to defer on, I think, is, can you, can you put a policy into effect that ultimately treats properties differently based on what development has happened around them and what hasn't happened around them?
No. There's a pretty clear answer to that, no.
Yeah, but I don't think the policy is stating anything different, right? The policy is still consistent that, doesn't matter which you are, you still have to do this. The real question is where, where, you know, either the developers, you know, coordinate and, and do the activity, or they work with town, and town becomes their partner in doing it. But that's a separate, that doesn't, that's not really a policy-based discussion, that's more about a funding-based discussion.
That was the economic discussion, which right now we're on the back foot with all economics.
The problem is that you're not getting developers together, you're getting developers together with people who have no desire to develop, they're just property owners. Common interest that would drive them together.
Some cases they do.
Yeah.
And that's why, I mean, in those cases, what can we do? What kind of policy can we put in place to incentivize those groups to get together, whereas the other ones who aren't with developable neighbors on those, on those segments wouldn't necessarily be punished unfairly either, right? Buffer somewhat could do that, but then if people choose to accept the extended buffers, then you have, you know, a discontinuous frontage along the road where you have forty feet here and twenty feet there, right? Because they chose to develop anyway with the larger buffer, and that's probably just as unappealing as having the power lines there. And not, not living, and the land not being used to its potential also, right?
Right.
Which is, which is important, I think you have to accommodate for that. Like I said, we're not in love with any of these options, that's pretty clear.
I'm with Tim. You know, you might need a pause, slow down in development, you know, that's not a bad thing to do, right? It, it's, it just will force the council and others to keep the case moving. Otherwise, this is never going to come to fruition.
Very true. But incentivize people to find a solution.
So you could craft a motion to that effect, or we could up the approach that we want to try and modify what's in front of us, the top part of ordinance B, something with the third slash point.
But we're, that's what this is voting on doing, is it not?
If you keep the second bullet point in, we're actually pulling back on some of our requirements.
Say that again, if you keep the second point in?
Right now, right now, by code, everything needs to be buried. So if someone were to come in and the length met the length on the master plan we were preparing with Duke, it would be required to be buried. Second kind of bullet point here would say, okay, they only need to be buried if they need to be relocated to accommodate the development.
If they wanted an entrance where a pole is, the whole line would have to be buried at their expense.
Yeah. Yeah.
I was saying, that would be pretty easy to shift that overall.
Then we get creative.
What was the objection to simply saying that ordinance B becomes effective at some point?
Absolutely, we could do that, that was something that was discussed. But then we thought, there's some benefit to at least getting the easement provision in there in the meantime. So we actually started off thinking, let's just push the date back so we have more time to work through all this. But it was getting the easement in place, so as we have development going through in the meantime, the landscaping's being put in the right place, and we're at least setting it up and establishing the framework.
Very important, so why can't we take the best of both worlds, why can't we insist on easement now? Rest of it becomes effective in the future.
You can.
I think that, that's a good compromise that allows us to do.
Talking, right?
Yeah, exactly, and, and I wouldn't give them, the, the, the new date wouldn't be two years up. The new date is perhaps six months out. So that we can come back and have this discussion all over again in six months and find out where the new pro, what, what progress are we making?
No.
How will we write that?
Yeah, that's the question. You guys need to back to us next month.
And you could make a motion that
After you write it with these conditions, and then you just bring it to the town council.
Yeah, that ordinance be, that, that the date be, the effective date be deferred until X, but that, as shown in your draft amendment, that that piece become effective May 1. The rest of it.
We recommend approval of the resolution with a different effective date? Is that what we're saying?
You could make a motion recommending that the proposed amendment take effect May 1, you know, as written. But that you're further amending that originally approved ordinance B in its entirety become effective at a later date.
So.
Is that going to take care of the third bullet and getting?
So.
It makes a statement to council that you want us to continue to work on that. And I'm sure there'll be some discussion about what an appropriate date is, you're probably looking at least a year out.
To me, this is also, this is also a perfect topic for a joint session. Because you can have these debates, right? And, and come up with perhaps creative solutions between.
If you point on this to November 1st.
Six months from now.
Then if nothing, well, first of all, between now and then, we're not collecting payment in lieu.
Clearly, nothing can happen in November, right, nothing can happen.
November 2nd, nothing can happen, and November 2nd, and the next year, nothing can happen, so.
I mean, if you do that, it's just completely ineffective. You can't start collecting the payment in lieu until, it sounds like they're saying, until we get a general statute passed, and that's a minimum of two years. They may not pass it then, it may be 40 years.
Correct.
Before they specifically say that we can do that. I mean, so if you delayed November 1st, that's just written on paper, that's all it is.
Well, at least what it does is signals our intent, but at the same time, I think this is a topic that needs discussion. We want to make sure that this is not punted in its entirety. Right? And, and this is something, I don't know, how do you continue to drive the discussion? I might take a, I might pick up the phone and call Steve and, and the rest of the team, CJ and, and others, but that's just me as an individual, right? But what I'm saying is, these are topics where collaboration helps.
I mean, we are going to continue working on the policy. The master plan from Duke, you know, Airport Boulevard and a few of the little segments are missing, so we still are working towards resolving that. And then developing a policy that will include betterments. So we're continuing to do that, and that's going to occur this year. And that's not going to stop, it's the PIL challenge, we don't have legislative authority for that. And when you request a bill, you can't just toss it out there and think it's going to happen, there's more to it than that. So you have to be very you, you know, we wouldn't, if we just would have tossed a bill out there, we would never made it out of a committee, would have been, you know, put into a committee and that would have been that, and we're done. The discussion would have been over at that point, because I don't think it would have come up during the short session, it's been in committee forever. You know, so we needed to make sure that we put more thought, more energy, finish our policy, and had other things in place, you know, meeting with the Home Builders Association, meeting with the Realtors Association. There's a lot of additional steps that we need to do to make sure that if we have a chance of collecting this, we have done our homework and we've done our homework well, otherwise it was done on arrival most likely.
Yeah, but the goal is not collecting PIL, the goal is really to bury the, the utilities. That's really the goal, right? PIL is just a way to get there.
Correct, and council can still do that. So council can still make sure that we're getting the appropriate easements in place. They can work with Duke to get the remainder of the easements in place, and they can do it as part of betterment projects, if you look at it.
As their own cost.
You know, but there's a cost associated with that, but at the end of the day, there is a cost associated with that. And council has to decide where are they going to put their money? Are they going to put millions of dollars into burying utilities? Are they going to put millions of dollars into affordable housing? Are they going to put millions of dollars into transportation? I mean, there's a lot of different competing items, and they're going to have to make a decision, and we weren't in a place right now. So, not going to say that we're not going to be there six months from now, but we were not in that position at this point in time.
Quite frankly, if it's important to the whole community, then they could do a bond for it all, and the whole community could vote to bury all the lines at whatever cost. And done with it once the easements are all in place. Right, I mean.
Lots of options, yes. But I would say from where we sit, this is not the end of the road, this is just another stop along the way to get to the end goal, which, as council had previously directed us, was to bury. Just have to make sure that we have the ability to collect PIL. This is not about things will never be buried at this point. Council does have to develop that, well, we have to draft the policy for them to review, and that will happen later this year.
I think we're just debating what date we put, and B's point is that any date before about two years from now is just going to be words on a piece of paper. But then the counter to that is take a pain away, then it's a risk of not, you know, you'll never address it, it gets ignored, so.
But in that solution, in that solution, though, we're still not getting the easement, though.
No, no.
But no, I think we would go with the easement, but we make the effective date later.
So in other words, what, what?
For the rest of it.
Right, so what we are saying is, we approve the amendment. In addition, we, we recommend, we recommend deferring the original ordinance B as defined to be effective from November 1st. So easement goes into effect on May, May, uh, May 1st, and the original ordinance as written today goes into effect on, sorry?
Two years.
But goes into effect on November 1st, right, whatever that may be.
Is that what we're all talking about, is that, everyone aligned on that? Yeah, I mean, I thi, I think at the end of the day, getting an easement is important enough to take action on, for sure. Like, the argument for getting the right-of-way on Crabtree Crossing extension, I feel similarly about, you know, the purpose for why you do that, right? I would support that.
So then, if we were to craft that statement, be something as required by whatever the, the we recommend approval with the following changes? Because it needs to unify development ordinance, is that where we would insert that?
Yes.
All right, just ask this once again. Is, there's no other way, payment burying the lines, there's no other way to, to collect any sort of funds from a developer for any other reason besides capture some of that at, at some point? In, in the space between now and the whenever, there's, there's no other creative solution to that?
We've tossed around all sorts of things, we have not come up with anything.
One thing we wouldn't have to do is we wouldn't have to approve rezonings for properties where they would be able to be exempted from the power line burial areas where they're not currently zoned to match. Councils could still do that however they decided, right? I mean, they felt like they had worked together and made a solution and gotten it buried, then they approved the rezoning, and if they didn't do that work, you know, when they had the opportunity to, then they don't approve the rezoning, right? If council is dedicated to that.
So if we wanted to do a date in the future for this one particular thing coming back into effect, what would the date be?
Six months to my left.
I, I, what would, you know, possible, I don't know if six months is enough, but I mean.
Well, I, I, I put six months because at the very least, you know, between now and six, in, in November 1st, we'll at least get another chance to see what progress we have made. If you give them a year out, then, you know, you'll have other priorities creeping that you might never work on this.
But in seven, if it's six months, on month seven, this goes into out later, so I think you're right, whatever date is the date.
I mean, and I'm assuming that there's not support for this is exactly written, correct? Sort of a quick straw poll, okay? So to do something, which we need, we all agree we need to do something.
We all agree that we need easement.
We need to put a date in this, and, because we're not going to really, I don't think, get any further tonight or anymore. So, I, yeah, what's, what's a date?
We say put pressure on them. Them is actually staff and council, I think.
We have put a lot of time and energy into this. We plan to continue to work on it. I mean, I was talking to Marty Clayton with Duke Energy an hour before this meeting started, and there were a couple of different projects that, that we were talking about. I mean, we are continuing to work together, we are continuing to meet, we are going to continue to do that. But if this were adopted with a May 1st date, we're back before, with a November 1st date, we're back before you on November 1st saying we needed to defer this further again. And we're going through the process of the notices and the meetings and the briefings, because we will not have the ability to put this in effect then.
But the fact that you were talking to Duke an hour before this meeting is because you were having this meeting and we got the May 1st deadline?
Obviously, we were keeping them in the loop about everything that was going on, but there were two other projects that development-related that we were talking about at the same time. And talking about continuing to meet on the master plan and wrapping that up. So this isn't something that we're just, you know, going to stop working on.
I have every confidence that you won't, but doesn't it help you in your negotiations with Duke if you've got a deadline hovering over both, both you and Duke?
Yes, which is part of the reason we had the May 1st deadline. It was a couple of things, one, we knew it couldn't become effective immediately, that we knew there were things that we had to do in the meantime, and we wanted, we also wanted to be transparent so everyone knew where we were heading with it, and we wanted to keep the pressure on to continue to work on it.
A November date at least has that benefit to you that it helps you a little bit with your negotiation with Duke. The last thing I want to do is give you more work that's not necessary or not fruitful, but that's, you know, one perspective on having a six-month deadline.
In terms of finishing up the master plan, in terms of talking more about a policy, you know, in the meantime, yes, those are things that, you know, saying we have to report back by X date. We're still not going to be there with the PIL piece, and we're still going to be saying we need to push back the effective date.
Understand, but, you know, in that six months, we could come up with some plans for PIL. And I'm not saying that it just staffs responsibly, this is why I was saying that we also have to figure out what could be other options. Given that we heard about these things about an hour ago, at least, maybe this is another point where we might sleep on it today, and maybe at the next meeting or maybe the meeting after, have a, you know, 30-minute or an hour working session to see what we can come up with.
You know, at the end of the day, I think there's been agreement with council and others that any solution we come up with doesn't work unless the town has skin in the game. So then it gets into a discussion of the financials and of town priorities overall.
I like what we're talking about, I, I think to be reasonable, more reasonable on the date, a year is probably, as suggested by staff, as the minimum. Cause too much short-term work for the purpose of just reapproving something else, because six months flies.
I'm okay with that.
How do we craft this, this amendment or this? Want to continue trying to?
Well, that's why, I mean, I was, I was thinking something of, you know, like I say, it would be somewhere before we went through all the different policies, right? It would be, would it be right after based on the following or right before based on the following? If we were to insert a date, a, a date to modify this.
I don't have the draft in front of me, but I think it would be something along the lines. The consistency statement could still stand as-is, but with the ordinance, you would be recommending adoption with the following amendments or changes. But the consistency statement, unless you disagree with those statements.
Be the whole thing, and then go to the ordinance.
The ordinance motion that would need to be changed.
So, I mean, you were saying do after all this, or I was thinking before, you know, that's what I remember the best place would be.
It's down here, you're going to want to add with the following changes.
Okay, so all this would still remain, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so all this, we would do one vote as-is, and the second one, we would do with the following changes.
Yes.
Do we have the consistency statement?
Right, so that's where we would do that, and so I guess then what we would say with the following changes, that bullet point three for payment lieu would come into effect in, on May 1st of next year, and what would be the wording for that?
I think it's, you know, with the following change, that original ordinance B in its entirety become effective on X date.
Yes. That makes it simple.
Are we capturing the easement?
Easement's in the, in the ordinance as approved.
Yes, so if you're recommending approval, you're recommending, if you're recommending approval of what's drafted and before you, you're recommending that the easement become effective immediately. But then with the change, you're recommending that the remainder of it still also take effect, you just have to pick that date.
Give it a whirl.
All right, I will make a motion that we approve All right, I will make a motion that we approve the following, the consistency statement as required by GS 160A-383. I hereby move to recommend approval of resolution 2019-83-0 of the Mooresville Planning and Zoning Board or Town Council. We recommend that a town council approve pertaining to the adoption of a planned consistency review statement for text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance related to utilities, AMN 19-01, based on the following. The proposed UDO text amendments are consistent with the comprehensive plan and are in the public interests because the proposed amendments support the following policies in the town's adopted land use plan. Policy 1A, promote growth and development that contributes to and builds upon the town's overall image as a well-planned, attractive, livable and unique community in the Triangle Region. Policy 1F, implement strategies that minimize threats to life and property from national, natural and man-made disasters. Policy 2A, promote development that fosters a sense of place by improving the character of the built environment, including visually appealing buildings, street skates, amenities and public spaces, as well as Goal 4, public safety readiness of the town's strategic plan to provide a safe and secure community through prevention, education, readiness and response, specifically Objective 4.3, which is to react responsibly to the public safety needs of the community.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Second?
Any discussion of the motion? Favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. I'd like to make the second motion, Lee.
I'm sure, why not? I make a motion that I hereby recommend the town council approve ordinance 2019-83-0 of the Mooresville Town Council approving text amendments to Unified Development Ordinance related to the burial of aggravated utility lines, AMN 19-01, with the following changes, that the original ordinance B become effective on May 1st, 2020. That's already-
It's part of that amendment.
That's already in the proposed amendment.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Second?
Question of that motion? Favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you for enduring that, Michelle.
Is that longer or shorter than you thought it would take? Just out of curiosity.
It's showing that we're doing our jobs.
I think you got the message that, you know, I hope that you will counsel our sentiments on that one.
Good evening. Well, I guess before I jump ahead. Chair, did, is, are you fine if I go ahead and skip on the item number?
Do we need to officially close public comments? Did we ever even?
Actually, do we open the public comment?
Yeah, he opened and closed it as well.
Okay, sorry. So moving on to the monthly newsletter, there actually were not any new submittals of any major applications. We're having lots of minors modifications to approve projects coming through the system right now, which is normal as they start closing out projects or they start building and there's my, as they start turning dirt, minor modifications are very common this time of year. But we have not had any major approvals either in the last month. As for town council approvals, town council had two approvals. One, they adopted the Comprehensive Transportation Plan on March the 12th. And they also approved the zoning map amendment for the aviation landing rezoning. There were modifications as it left this board and went to council. Some of those modifications related to green space were some of the comments that came through the process here. But they did add affordable housing units if the multifamily is to include rental units, not home owner occupied multifamily units. And so basically, they're sold as condos, there will be no affordable housing. But if they're sold as apartments or rented out as apartments, there'd be affordable housing units. That's probably the, one of the changes. There's also changes related to where they would use a construction entrance during which phases of project, as well as some other minor ones. Land use plan update. This is not new news to you since you were there. But you were presented with the sub-areas. Council was also presented with the sub-areas. And there was no direction provided on the town center because we're going to bring back modeling for both of those so they can be compared. So you can have a better understanding visually how much parking. If we go the lower density surface parking only, how much of the area would need to be occupied by parking to develop? And then they're going to also prepare a shared parking, a parking deck option with the more dense so they can have better idea of which direction that they need to head and provide recommendation on. As for McCrimmon, they preferred alternative two. That was the one that had the multifamily. But there was an area, if you remember, there's, there's a road that would extend over from airport. The area north of that, they were recommending more flexibility in office or schools or hospitals. They didn't want to see that area necessarily as multifamily. So that was one of the changes made to that. And then for TOD area, they recommended alternative two as well, the one that had the flexibility. So there was a fair amount of alignment, I would say, between what was voiced here and what their concerns were as well. And really, the only difference is that one area in the McCrimmon extension, I think is what we see. Kind of a departure. And I think that was kind of a great idea, honestly, they were, you know, thought of. Hazard mitigation plan, that is currently underway. You can go and take the survey, the link is active on this, so if you open it up, you can get there. It's required to be updated every five years and we're in the process of that updating it as part of a multi-jurisdictional, just like the one that was adopted five years ago. And then the transportation study, you were part of that kickoff. And again, if you have not taken the survey, please go ahead and do that. Basically, you're allocated $100 and within that $100, you can decide what you would like to see. You know, if you could build your transportation system, what would you want? And you're given a specific budget to do that. And there's budget allocations. If you've taken it, you'll know exactly what I'm saying. If you haven't, you'll understand when you get there. But I encourage everybody to do that, even though you participated in the group. Because it's a little bit different, it's not exactly the same. It really gets into, you know, lighted shelters, covered shelters, you know, things along those lines. So there's some other options that weren't even discussed at the work session.
I, I would have liked that, that in that study, it would have been nice if there were a comment section. If there wasn't any to put in any additional comments anybody could provide.
Yeah, it's a very different survey. It's interesting than we've ever done before. There were no opportunities for general comments. It was very quick, I mean, unless you really got stuck. It's a quick survey. And some of the data that we collect was really less important in this case. We received positive feedback. I don't think I've ever really said I'd love to take in the survey. I've actually received emails, thanks for making it short and thanks for making it fun. So apparently, people don't like to give out their statistical information. So we can then get a better idea of gauge, do we only capture the 60-plus? So it was an interesting, I, you know, I've actually encouraged usually staff, I tell people, my staff, never to take surveys. This one I actually said to take. To take it because it's something that we could potentially utilize as staff. So it's quite different than we'd ever participate in land use ones, parks and recs, ones that we tend to have a bigger impact on, I think. And, and it's more important to hear from the town, not the town staff. But that's it on the way of update of March, unless y'all have any questions? Happy to answer them.
Thank you, Courtney. Well, you actually missed one important event that happened at the council meeting on April 9th.
That is true, and I sent an email that evening to him and I got dead silence. So I don't know if he was celebrating heavily as a result. Or if he had already gone to bed and it was, you know, put him to sleep kind of materially.
Counsel took him out for drinks.
And, and we didn't know at the last meeting that, you know, that's what you'd be doing.
So actually, I thought I was going to not, to not be here next week, but.
Word comments, Catherine?
So what I brought up over email, so I don't know how many of you guys are aware that they've announced the closure for apartments at McCrimmon. Actually, they basically kind of came up here and said that they were going to work with everybody and not close it down for a long time. Now, according to Courtney, they originally asked for two years. So I, I'll be honest, that really makes me not want to take people at their word. And it really makes me want to be a lot more strict in how we vote and how we put things into these things. Because I, I mean, you can go on social media, people were like super mad about it. Now, it, they're, they're upset because they think they weren't included in the process, but they, certainly the process was public and it was, they could have been included if they wanted to, people, you know, weren't. But it isn't a good look.
And I, I will say, is the contractor put those signs out prior to notifying the town? They weren't supposed to put them out quite yet. So I think that created a fair amount of the heartburn that's out there. But, you know, Michelle worked extensively trying to shorten it down. We reached out to our attorney, you know, what are our rights? We do have an easement there and we do have rights associated with that. They own the property, they also have rights. And really, there's a couple of things at play. You know, if we would have been able to get Town Hall North kind of extended further and we couldn't because jurisdictional wetlands, that could have potentially provided another opportunity or alternative. But there's a stormwater detention in that area in order to get that installed. We were hoping to get it down to what, six months is what we were shooting for? But it's just going to take longer to install some of those facilities. And then there will be a detour for a while. That was kind of our, you know, when, if you will, to allow them to route up Town Hall Drive through the driveway and the sidewalk on their site and then go up part of the greenway. So we were able to get part of the greenway installed sooner rather than later.
They committed to doing that. They, they sat right here in this room, it's recorded somewhere, that they committed to doing this in phase one, they said.
And phase one is what's going to take the year. So that, that, what they said that they were going to scale it back, they have done. I just don't think it was scaled back as far as a lot of us were hoping. But they do have to remove it and they'll be reinstalling it in order to get a lot of their infrastructure in place.
I guess it's good news that there's a lot of people that at least say that they've been using that connection, so that, that's good. I guess my question is, what happens when they don't meet the one-year closure date? I mean, I'm assuming that because we don't actually own the land and there was a reason for that, probably for either to save money or they wouldn't sell it, we don't have as much control. But I mean, if they, let's say, oh, well, we need another six months, I mean, what can we do?
That's when we all involve the town attorney again, because we do have rights to the easement. And we'll have to get back to find out in more detail what some of those rights are.
But I'm assuming that we didn't buy that land for a reason, it was-
No, we always just acquire access easements. Very rarely do we acquire land, except most of the time we do acquire easement, but sometimes we go to acquire the person's, like, I'm only going to sell it to you if you purchase the land. And then we end up purchasing land, but as a general rule, all greenways are on public access easements.
I think the council is going to quickly on trying to-
That is my understanding. They are actively recruiting for it. I've seen a couple of email blasts go out to different listservs that we have trying to recruit. My request was that it's kind of the same bullet that, you know, they'd be able to, you know, be objective and even if their opinion is different, they'd still have to follow the rules. You can state that your opinions are different, but still understand that there are certain rules that have to be followed. We have to adhere to Robert's rule of order. And I say historically, we've, the board has always done that. But that's kind of my one request that I had. If I get any requests at all, that was kind of my little verbiage, if you will.
That was, that was good to see. So if, if you know friends or colleagues or people who you think?
Strongly encourage them, especially if they're sitting on another committee. It even increases their chances of being appointed. A lot of times if you're another, or if you've done something similar elsewhere in a different community. I think that would be excellent to get some more great candidates up here.
So the, any other point I'd like to make, as suggested to me earlier, we'd like to reach out to Harleen wherever you are listening and say that we do this. Can we move on to item 15?
I'll move that we adjourn.
Do I have a second? Motion and a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.